Was that on an amended amended?
Yes.
Okay.
It was an amended amended, yes. So hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations Karen. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. I appreciate that. And if you want to leave tonight, you have a long way to go. Okay, now we're going to get into public hearing. We have a public hearing for ABID LLC Village Gas at 173 Danielson Pike. They are applying for a virtual and holiday sales license. This is a license transfer or new license. It's not the annual license that we usually do in January. So this is a new one.
And that's for the year ending December 31st.
Right, it's for the year ending December 31st. So I will open that public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the Village Gas? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the Village Gas?
I just have a question.
Yes.
What are they going to sell?
Gas. Well, they have the gas. I haven't been inside, but evidently they have like a mini-mart type thing.
Snacks.
Snacks, yeah. Same thing, yeah. I have not been inside yet, but that's what I'm assuming. It looks nice from the outside. The outside looks really nice.
You did a really nice job.
They did, they did. So that's what, so stop in. They supposedly have the cheapest gas in town, so.
I think for my two gas stations, Tuesday night was $305.
Oh, $297.
Really?
Uh huh, I got it Monday morning, $297.
Good.
So there you go. Hearing no discussion, I'm going to close the public hearing. I will bring it forward to the council.
I make the motion to approve the following holiday sales licenses upon renewal of annual licensing fee and approvals from the building official, tax collector, and police chief where applicable. ABID LLC, DBA Village Gas, 173 Danielson Pike, to approve the following virtual licenses upon...
Oh, no, first, we gotta vote on that one first. Okay, sorry, two separate motions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I move to approve the following virtual licenses upon receipt of annual licensing fee and approvals from the building official, tax collector, and police chief where applicable. ABID LLC, DBA Village Gas, 173 Danielson Pike.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to old business, we have the police station update. As you recall from the last meeting, we asked that someone from the police building committee, I reached out to Joe Walsh, who was the chairman, and he is here tonight to give his update. I am also going to make the phone call to...
I did. I spoke to Gordy Brayden yesterday, and he is meeting with the architect on Monday. And he said as soon as the design is final, they're ready to complete the transfer of land. He's just waiting on that, so he should hear more on Monday. I don't know if Joe has anything that he should know about.
Mr. Walsh, if you could see this?
I think this is why David, David had texted me a copy of Gordy's text.
Okay.
And he, you have it. I printed a copy for everybody and handed it out.
Okay.
And he asked me to copy it and still didn't hear it.
Do you want me to read Gordy's letter first and then? Okay. Says David, it's not here.
I'm assuming this is what it's called.
He says, "Hi Dave, I was thinking about your question and I know you had to ask." I don't recall what the question is or what it was, but "The fire company is committed to giving enough property to 694, at 694, to the town for police station. The fire company wants to do this. We think it will be the best for the police department and the town for free. The property is a flat gravel cleared lot with a septic system, well, no fill needed, ready to access to Danielson Pike. Access to Route 94 is also possible, again, for free. This is perfect location for a safety complex. All the fire company is asking for is a plan showing the layout of the buildings and grounds before we deed the property. We want to maximize the use of the land. When this is done, we will divide and deed the property no sooner. Again, this is free. For those that do not understand free, the definition is in the dictionary." That's a little condescending, sorry. I think after listening and hearing from people, he had...
Enough.
No, we had a good conversation. Yes, he was rather concerned about the last meeting. Mr. Walsh, if you would state your name and address, please?
My name is Joe Walsh, 153 C Danielson Pike, Foster, Rhode Island. Good evening, Madam President, council members and neighbors. My name is Joe Walsh, and I serve as the chairman of the Police Department Building Committee. I've been invited here to update you on the Police Department Building and again explain why things take the time they do. So I want to start off with a little recap of where we are, how we got to where we are, and then go from there if that's fair enough for you, Madam President. So here's the first fact. Police Department never should have been housed in the Aylesworth House in 1964, '65. It will never ended up there. So it was there 50 years. So it wasn't until 2014 when Police Chief Bill Zeo at the time raised the question of building a legitimate police station. Couple of years later, 2016, the town council at the time appointed the committee to investigate work and report back, report back to the town council with a plan. Town council made a very clear choice in 2016 on how they wish to progress on this matter. They chose to appoint a layboard rather than hiring a professional firm that can do the work start to finish. My presumption is they wish to spend those hundreds of thousands of saved dollars on the needs of the town for a police station and not on paid professionals. This is not irresponsible or at all uncommon if you have access to knowledgeable people who are willing to volunteer in your town. Having access to a committee of volunteers that included a land use attorney, registered building contractor, licensed electrical contractor, experienced chief of police, EMA resource who is also a volunteer firefighter, building materials and building system expert is also a fire chief, an engineer, and a successful entrepreneur, there's no mystery as to why the town council unanimously voted to proceed in that direction. Just to be clear, the ad hoc committee from day one was never provided with a budget target, a size target, an outline by laws template of bulk delivery advice on the project. We were given a mission statement and then we were told to go on our way, which we did. We were not provided the services of the town clerk and solicitor at the meetings. Attorney Renee Babalacqua did attend every meeting, which was our solicitor, but after the election in 2016, we did not have a solicitor. Kelly Russ had suggested in 2016 the town council allocate $30,000 to develop a plan, but the committee can't spend that money, of course, so that would be the town council's plan to spend that money on how they were going to do it. After we, apparently we get a plan and maybe get to an architect. So here is a mission statement that was drafted by the town council and unanimously approved. The committee is charged to evaluate and report back to the town council regarding the location, design, and location design and building of a new police station that meets the needs of the police department and that will serve the town of Foster. The station shall be constructed in order to provide a safe, efficient, and cost-effective building that will consider both the current and future needs of the town of Foster. The committee shall contain one member of the town council, the police chief, and five members at large, with the treasurer and the building and zoning official as consultants. Said committee will be appointed by the town council and report back to the council no later than August 25th, 2016. As I believe everyone knows by now, there's an article in New Observer recently that inaccurately painted the committee in a less than favorable light, and I want to address this and clarify a few things before I move forward with the current status. We can start by clarifying that we are discussing a police station and not a fire station, as the article stated. That statement will be consistent with the accuracy of the entire article. The building committee has not failed to meet a single time when to vote an action, when a vote or action was needed by the committee. I personally have not missed a single meeting since day one and even have filled in a secretary when needed. We only missed quorum approximately five times since inception. One was by town error, and with that exception, being the only one, that there was a vote that was delayed. The other four had no votes or any action needed. The committee has even met on at least one weekend to get a vote done and agreed to meet on other weekends as many times if needed. It's important to understand each member also has other obligations to the town people that our committee meetings had to be structured around, but that still did not cause a single delay. Members were or are still on school committee, zoning board, town council, fire department, ambulance board, planning board, oversight committee. Cub Scouts leader and the chief of police has been required to be at other town meetings on top of that. In addition, being members of the human race, there have been deaths, illnesses, and family commitments that have kept some members from meeting, but again, this has not caused a single delay at any time. So were in fact there any real delays? When you discover we had documentable opposition from day one from elected representatives of the town which sent us in other directions and also had to redesign for historical compatibility and then to reduce costs due to COVID inflationary impacts, one might think it's a miracle we have made it to the point we're at today with so many obstructions. I will touch on each aspect of the project in its timeframes before I am through so you can understand the work this committee has done. I will then tell you where the committee stands and what needs to be done to bring this project to fruition. Our mission was to get the design and location to build a new police station done. We did that in three and a half months and two and a half in 2016, although our part was complete, whereas there was zero effort from elsewhere, the committee took more and more responsibilities, so the project did not die on the vine as some had hoped it would. Key milestone dates when the committee met its obligation is stated in the mission statement. July 7th, 2016, when the location was selected and a rough design was drafted by the committee. Again, on April 20th, 2017, when the first schematic designs were submitted from the architect. Again, on October 25th, 2017, when the modified plans were reviewed. Again, on May 7th, 2019, when a presentation was made at the foster financial meeting. Again, on January 30th, 2020, when the plans or historic changes were reviewed. Again, on August 13th, 2020, when the location on Route 6 was recommended. Again, on September 15th, 2020, when public presentations took place. And again, on June 15th, 2021, at the financial town meeting. So here are the timeframes. We start with number one, which was to investigate the Situate merger rumor, investigate a town hall option, investigate renovations to existing house the police department is currently in and develop a plan. That took three months. That was where we met the first milestone and completed our mission statement. And I'm gonna break these down a little bit so you understand what happens. We were told there was already a merger in place with Situate and Foster and that there was money and a settlement from Google that was gonna build this police department free and clear. Didn't meet the mission statement, but it was certainly worth looking into if the money was free and that was how it was gonna go. We have no authority to do anything on it, but we looked into it. So I did get an agenda in the town of Situate. Town of Situate then met with the town of Foster. Town council at that point, they decided not to proceed or they've just never proceeded with it since then, nothing to do with my committee. Investigate the town hall option. It was suggested when the town hall was built that the police department was supposed to go in there or was planned to go in there or whatever. I went there one day, actually Kelly Russ walked me around, and Jane Christopher, again is back in 2016, and I measured every square inch that was available in town hall and I drafted my own architectural plan and I brought it back to the council, the committee, excuse me. The committee looked at it, reviewed it, it was about a half maybe of the square footage that would be needed for the police station. It also involved actually moving every single person in that building to a new place, renovating the entire building and putting two additions on it plus an elevator. The committee decided that would be much more expensive, which was presumed right from the start, and it was also there was a lot of accreditation issues with the police department being inside the town hall. So we moved on from that idea. Then we looked at the, we actually started looking at the police department initially. I toured it with Bill Zeo, Gordy Brayden had toured it many times. To renovate a live police department, we have to remove everybody from the building, put them somewhere else, renovate the entire building, put two or three additions on it to get the space you need, and then move them back in, ridiculously expensive, on top of the lead, the asbestos, rain on, or whatever else you got in that building. So that didn't make any sense. So we got the, what we believed to be the best design, the best plan, by within three months. Again, didn't go anywhere from there. So we took it the next step. We created the RFP. The town didn't do this, the committee did. Brendan Mara, who's on the committee, who's the engineer, he's the one who offered to do this on his own time, away from his own family, to design and build the RFP so we get prices for the first plans for the architect. So that process from the time that RFP was started to the time of public advertising and the interviews, selection of the architect, the architect being hired by the town, and the first plans being drafted and submitted back to us was nine months. We then at that point got updates to those plans, to modifications, to receive those updated plans for the Howard Hill location, six months. This is not the committee, this is the professionals who do the work. Then after that, an RFE was processed to complete the survey on the Howard Hill location. Committee members also reviewed 109 Danielson Pike, which is across the street at the request of the town council. That process took 11 months. And this is also, if you want to know why the surveyor doesn't rush to do our work, we beat him down by 900 bucks so he would do the job. So if, think about if you, you're doing work for somebody and you ask somebody to cut their price by $900, you're probably not on the top of the list. We had a question that then presented itself on the historic zone. Is this, is there any oversight by the historic committee for this project? So four months, we waited for that answer, four months, we never got that answer. Town council decided to move forward anyway considering that it would be historic because we have actually seen in my career buildings taken down that did not meet historic requirements because somebody tried to bypass that, and we could never get a clear answer. Then we decided that the library has some interest in a joint venture, first back on Route 6, long before we knew we had that property, and then, and then maybe something over here, somehow connecting room, joint parking, shared septics, shared wells, that kind of stuff. That project, that conversation was two months, and then that kind of fizzled out. We never really went anywhere with that. And the logic there was they have access to a lot of grant money that we don't, so we thought that they could do a lot of stuff that we could not. Then the next thing was we received the new design changes with the historic updates because remember we changed the design plan to fit with the historic society and which they, the updates that they had recommended and made those modifications. That process took nine months. Then we reviewed with the foster town council and we planned a public meeting. It was five months before that, after that, that the new land was offered on Route 6. The recommendation we made to the foster town council was move to the 110 Danielson Pike location. One and a half months after that, the foster police department building committee recommend, excuse me. We acquired the land there or the initial process was done, then one and a half months later, we made the recommendation to the foster town council after we had several public meetings, progress plans on new location, the public presentations, and the wellness septic data was sent to the architect. Three weeks after that, site plans were developed, financial town meeting and a vote, in this whole process. Three weeks after we started, site plans were developed, financial town meeting and a vote, modification of the plans to reduce the cost due to the concerns raised to the foster financial town meeting and inflationary issues. Add a community room, which we were working on a grant for, attempt to get funding for the survey for the foster town council, and foster town council wanted to wait until after the vote to do some of this work. Town, the town worked with the architect to see if they can continue with that firm without going back out to bid. That question started in October of 2020. The signed contract happened June 10th, 2022. Okay, that was a 20-month span that all of that stuff happened, a lot of this out of our hands completely. As a matter of fact, it took seven months from the initial conversations between the contractor, the architect and the town, seven months to get that contract signed. Nothing to do with this committee at all. Then we did the RFP for the survey to receive, and the data was received by, to the architect, that was six months. That was started September of last year by the planner here. He worked with the architect, it was delivered to him last week. Nothing to do with this committee at all. So then there's the question, you know, the professionals that we're working with, do they see Foster as a priority? In general rural towns are seen as a priority anyway just because they're rural, but there was at least three different times of elected representatives of this town with majority support of the town council, for at least two of those times publicly alleged it was a merge with Situate police in the works. The merger never existed, the Google lawsuit money never existed for Foster-Situate. The committee is an ad hoc committee anyway and would have zero authority to take action to merge police departments so the town could reduce staffing. All staffing terminations, moving into another town, legal work, collective bargaining, and litigation will be handed by the town council and the town solicitor. Foster town council, and more importantly, the Situate town council chose not to pursue that direction, not the committee. When the committee decided to move on, the town council went as far as produce, or a member of the town council went on to produce artistic renderings and detailed architectural plans for a facility claimed to be designed for a merger. Only issue was in fact in Situate, but it was Situate, Massachusetts. At least one time, a very public effort by a member of the town council with majority support, the town council tried to disband the foster police department by asking the state police to take over the town policing. Again, being an ad hoc committee, we have zero authority to terminate the police officers and dispatches of our town or redirect payment to the state police to respond to calls in this town. Those decisions rest wholly with the town council and of course, the state police. An endeavor the state police said, "No, thank you," two years ago. But these are the questions the architect's asking me. Are you serious? You won't get to work on the plans, but I'm reading in the paper that you're disbanding your police department. Town council appointed the same elected representative to the building committee who repeatedly demonstrated his own actions that he does not want a police department or at least a police building in the town of Foster. Awarding a survey contract only if they lower their price by $900, of which they'd read, false rumors of lawsuits against the town on ownership of the Route 6 land besmirching the generous benefactor of the land donation, false rumors that the land is not deeded to the South Foster Volunteer Fire Department now, false rumors that the land will not be deeded to the Foster Police Department once the exact amount is detailed in the South Foster Volunteer Fire Department. Imagine throwing mud on the dedicated volunteers who we trust with our very lives of the South Foster Volunteer Fire Department and not considering them worthy of our trust for them to honor their word on deeding a portion of the land for the police station as agreed. So in addition to all these timeframes and meetings, I mentioned there were dozens more meetings to fine tune plans and discuss other ancillary ideas for the project. We met for stretches of time, twice a month, and in some other months when there was absolutely not a single thing to discuss, whereas there was no action that was in progress such as plans being drawn or surveys being executed, there was no justified, viable reason to meet. The town council may not know this, whereas they either chose not to attend the vast majority of the meetings or they chose not to utilize the town council appointment to the building committee for the information as designed. This person was appointed to be the very conduit between the two groups that was wisely built into the mission statement by the town council themselves in 2016. When the people's representative, Mike Chippendale, was diligently stumping for $1.3 million in funding at the state house on the town's behalf to offset inflationary cost, I was there to testify. Brendan Mara was there to testify, Gordy Brayden was there to testify, Amita Rodner was there to testify, and Denise, Madam Chair, President, excuse me, Madam President DeFranco was, had submitted written testimony. Most of us, including Madam President, did submit the testimony. Noticeably absent in person or in any written testimony were all of you. Quite honestly, you weren't there, not a single one of you, right? But this is somehow the committee's fault that we've got these problems, right? Noticeably absent in person, written testimony was not only you, but we have an elected senator in town who was in the building and didn't even testify in the bill nor submit a companion bill in the other, in the other house, in the other chamber, which a companion bill in the senate, we maybe could have had a hope. The house is a little bit more difficult. Lastly, it was not the town council that called the USDA or US Senator Jack Reed to try to obtain federal assistance. Jack came to this very building and sat in that very chair over there, and he could privately meet with Madam President and myself to discuss options. No TV cameras, no press conference, no caviar, just a busy, extremely powerful and concerned United States Senator trying to help a town that could care less about supporting his party, because like most of us, it's people and community first and always. Let's not speak about where we are today. I have people asking about lawsuits that don't exist, South Foster Volunteer Fire Department backing out deeds, parking spots, moving the building for some odd reason, some other purposeful distraction over to another piece of land, which I have no idea where that came from, because that is not from our committee at all. So I would just suggest that neighbors, if you don't get distracted, here is where we are today. The contract for construction plans has finally been signed by the town. Besides minor adjustments, all modifications have been sent to the architect. The overall survey has been completed and sent to the architect last week. The architect is currently modifying the site plan to get the building closer to the former background restaurant location, for those of you who are newer to town, that is far over to the left, closer to the church entrance. Upon approval of the building plan, the architect will be adding the required parking spaces to the site plan. We literally have people being told the parking spaces should be drawn before the building is drawn, which is a unique concept for me being in construction for my entire life. The town will draft an RFP or hire a professional to draft and invite people to bid the project. When the appropriate land is determined, the town will perform an administrative subdivision. The town council will review and perform scope reviews on all responders to the construction RFP. Project will be awarded and construction schedule established. It is unclear on how the town's gonna manage a project, whether they're gonna hire a construction manager or clerk for their work, so what they're gonna do, that'll be up to the town council also. This also presumes the town council does not choose to relocate the station back over the town land on South Killingley Road. If that happens, the process starts not quite at the beginning, but close. We have several designs, probably get a design to fit there after the fill, after the ledge, all that kind of stuff. You will need a well, you will need a septic, and you will leave a vacant lot on Route 6 because there's nothing else that could be done with the lot, because the fire department owns it. So you'd have to perform all the other tasks, you know, land surveys and those things. The land on Route 6 will remain, again, as open space for the fire department to, I guess, mow or plant a tree or whatever they want to do. There are many other items such as bonding applications and assurances, which I'm sure Kelly is very familiar with, that will happen along the aforementioned process. As with any other public process, project, many bids come in over budget. There are some tricks to minimize that, but it is a very real possibility as it is in every town, every year, with every single public project I've ever been for a bid open to. In a normal operating town, you would simply present the facts to the governing body. Public informational meetings and literature are created, a vote is taken, and with few exceptions, passes with the governing body's support. I predict, based on historical evidence, that that will not happen in this town. The rumors will fly, the fingers will point, and your project will die, only to be rekindled down the road for a higher impact on you than taxpayer. None of us can prevent the contractor throwing a number at a project, not caring if they get it or not. None of us can change the cost of materials or the interest rates, and with more cooperation from day one, that would not even be a concern or a question today. I will end with this. I have volunteered in this town for 15 years and the 23 I've lived here. When I arrived in this town all those years ago, I was immediately refused a hearing at the zoning board for variance by the zoning clerk, where she did not like the previous owner of the land. I thought that attitude was a fluke and I was completely wrong. I did, of course, win that battle, and I did still open my lot of home model residences where I had already been, had paid for the package. However, myself and my company made a choice not to build our next manufacturing mill here on Oxford Pike, and we moved it back to Pennsylvania to our home office. I volunteered in 26 of the 39 communities across the state and a few in Mass and Connecticut. I currently serve a more than a dozen boards and committees across the state, seven of which I serve as the chairman. Never in my life, as I have I ever had to defend my volunteers on any board, except perhaps one rogue member having a bad day. Never ever had to dispel so many unfounded rumors for any project, particularly one that is such a benefit for the municipality. Never I have been so disrespected as well as my faithful colleagues have been in this town. One of my absolute favorite lies that I hear is the committee is stalling the project. On what bizarre planet would volunteers continue to sacrifice their precious time to delay a project that they not only completely support, but one is also the vast majority of the town calls and completely supports? When I drive through Foster on Route 6 and I am welcomed by bombed-out buildings, shanties, abandoned boats, cars on blocks, dumpsters on every corner, and even an abandoned camper parked on an illegally filled-in pond for the last five years right across my house that magically disappeared yesterday, and I appreciate whoever got that done. I stand in amazement at any sane person would not jump at the chance to build a new public building on the main thoroughfare. It certainly won't fix the mess, but may distract enough people so that they don't see quite as much crap as they drive through. Maybe then some business may decide to take a shot on us. Maybe the highly visible location will also assist to reduce the ridiculous speed people travel on Route 6 and lower injuries and fatalities, or reduce the violent crime in town such as the home invasion earlier this month, or the seemingly endless Facebook post about unwalked with strangers banging on doors in town. Madam President, council members, I wish to thank you for the invite tonight. I hope that was informative for all of my interests, and I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I don't have any questions to ask about this. I appreciate your history, Joe. I appreciate your service on the committee. You seem to be taking this extremely personally. I got some personal attacks, I know that we directed it myself and my husband...
Not for me, you didn't.
Yes, you, yes, okay. So, but anyway, when we were running for council in 2018 and we were discussing goals, my number one goal, get this police station done. Get it to a vote. Now that was in 2018, and I have been banging the drum. It seems like it's been a long time, and you're taking this personally. It's not personal. I want our cops to have their police station.
So do I.
It was, okay. And, and all I'm doing is questioning, why is this taking so long? Why, why isn't the land done yet? It's, it's been years. That's it. You're taking it personally? You're taking it personally? It's not personal.
I think personally, it's offensive to, it's offensive to the commission.
Let her speak.
You know what? I, I've been a volunteer.
I am sitting here.
I've been a volunteer in this town for 25 years too. I've saved many lives on the firefighter, and I'm in the empty. So you don't have to tell me about volunteering. Oh, excuse me, Lynn?
Mrs. Rogers? Thank you.
Um, so you don't have to tell me about volunteering. I know all about that. And I don't know, like, you're taking it personally. All I'm trying to do is get answers and get this station built. I want it done. Our cops are in that building. They've been in there way too long.
Yeah, fifty years, you blow.
And, and they deserve better. Don't take it personal. I just want to get, to get this station done for our cops.
We all, we all do. But did you ask the planner why it took seven months to get the survey done?
No, I spoke.
Did you ask any of the architects why it takes eleven months?
I spoke to Gordon. And there were a lot of delays. There were a lot of things that were changed. The, the location cost us two and a half years. I was told that there were conflicts for meeting and that certain members could not meet because of the time. And that's why I said, well, if they can't meet, let's replace them and get somebody on there who can be a functioning member. That's all.
But we barely ever missed a quarter. And we've moved the time.
I'm just saying.
To help everybody.
Your, your speech and your history was very personal. This is not personal from me. I want this station done. I want to get this done. We got it approved. We're going to go for funding, and I just want to get it done. I talked to Gordy yesterday, and he is meeting with the architect on Monday. I still have no dates, you know, as to when it's going to be completed, the design is going to be done. I, I just want to stay on this and not drop the ball. I want it done. That's it. Nothing personal.
Many wants it done too.
I appreciate the work that you've done.
Why else would we, why else would we?
I just have to interject one thing, because I've taken this personally. I, I assume Joe has.
Yes.
I think every member of that committee has taken it personally. I'm there representing the council, but the last meeting, it was, we'd like somebody from the committee to come. Well, I'm there. I'd come back and report to you, but I wasn't good enough.
Nobody said you weren't good enough to me.
You asked for someone else to come. Well, that to me was personal.
Okay.
The attack that would have been made to the police committee, the police building committee, whether they're personal or not, I'm taking them personally. So I'm assuming the other people on the committee are also taking it personally, who have been, I haven't been on it that long. It started with John Mastiibo, then Gordon went on it, and then I've been on it. I have not been on it as long as Joe, Brendan, Tom Walden, who else?
Gordy.
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 Anthony wasn't here for a while, and now Anthony's back. So there's people that have been putting for years, and yes, they've been wanting it done too. I don't think there's anybody in this town who can honestly say, phew, I'm so glad this is taking so long.
No, so do you object for me requesting it to be on the agenda at every meeting?
No, I do not.
Okay, because I just want to make sure we're looking forward.
I do, and we've had it on, and I do not have an objection. But to say you don't take it personally, I think it's hard not to take it personally.
I apologize if you took it personally. I'm not dissing your, your service on that, but I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I think you're seeing everybody's service on that. I think.
I was not disrespecting anyone, Denise. I want to.
Okay, well, then I misunderstood. David had something he wanted to say.
Joe, I, I take responsibility for not showing up at the State House. You were right. We should have all been there. We should have supported you and the committee and the efforts for the town. And you know that, you know personally that I believe strongly from the beginning that this police station should have been built and the police department taken seriously in the need for a new station. I'm really sorry of the way that, after listening to your, your statement, it's really humbling to hear that you felt so disrespected and mistreated, and I apologize for that because I've known you my whole adult life and your dad, and I know that your service to the town and your volunteerism is stellar. It's really tough to compete, and so is Gordy Brayton. And there's a lot of people in this room that volunteer, Heidi and Gordon and Lynn Ryder. This town has great volunteers, and, and they shouldn't be disrespected, and you should be appreciated for everything you've done and what you've brought to the table as a leader. Clearly, your ability to run a committee is impeccable. I worked with you on the zoning board. You're good at what you do. You know what you're doing. I know we, we appreciate what you've done, and I do take responsibility personally for not supporting more by being there when you needed us. But I do admit that there is a movement in town to derail the police department bill. There is an active movement to make it seem absurd. There are questions coming up again to potentially, again, potentially undermine what's going on. It just seems to be floating, and I'm glad that you're working it to a conclusion. I'm glad that it's moving forward. I thank you very much for what you've done and what you continue to do, and I'm sorry that it seems otherwise.
I appreciate that there. The, yeah, it's, again, Tifer is deep in this town, right? Surprising in a rural town, but it is. So, and when you say I shouldn't take things personally, maybe I guess I did. I didn't really think about it in that, in that fashion.
It was very personal.
Okay, well, I'm a personal guy, right? I volunteer at my time. I can be, other places make a lot.
I understand.
Know what I want to do, but I come here. And when the town council appointment in between John Stevo and Denise, Mr. Rogers was on the floor, at the same time trying to outsource the police to the state police.
There were options that were being explored at that time.
Yeah, but they just tell the council, we're going to explore this, and just come back later on if that doesn't work out.
I talked to Gordy about that yesterday, about all the options that were explored, and then the committee decided that the best thing was to move forward with a new station. And that's been the trajectory ever since. I don't think it ever changed once, once the.
Well, the state police denied it. That's the only reason we kept moving.
What's that?
The state police denied it. They didn't, they said.
Well, whatever, it was an option, but then it was that you guys, this was the trajectory, and it was a new station, and that was the decision, and that was approved by the council. And we moved it forward with you to get it to a financial town meeting. So, I mean, yeah, there's a history. There were other things that were explored, but ultimately, once the decision was made, we've just tried to move it forward. We had two financial town meetings.
No, no, I understand.
One that was set in September of 2020, that was canceled when this new land became available. And great, it's a great piece of land. However, it did set us back. So now, we're, you know, we started over, and then we got another financial town meeting nine months later, and it was approved. And now we're going, we're going to be almost two years since it was approved. So I think you can understand my frustration. I get that there's delays with architects and stuff like that. What I want to do is keep it on the food burner. I want to keep it moving. I want to talk to Gordy. I want the council to be involved. Like you said, like, none of us were involved. I want to be involved. Well, you did.
Yeah, I did say. But you're not.
No, and here I am trying to get it on every agenda, so it's not forgotten, so we are involved, so we keep it moving forward, so, so we don't have unnecessary delays. That is all I want. I didn't mean to insult you.
Well, we didn't take those shows up in the papers.
Well, okay, well, I'll tell you that half of, half of that was not my words. A lot of it was. Like, I did say.
Oh, you should sue them now.
I did say I'm embarrassed, but there were some words that were not mine. I don't know where they came from, but my words are all right in the meeting in the video, and you can look at them, and you can listen.
I mean, they need to do that. I would definitely sue the paper if they did.
It's, it's not an insult. It's, I want to keep this project moving. I want it done.
My, my point, what I'm trying to explain, and maybe I'm not explaining myself very clearly, is when we move to different locations and different plants and stuff, the town council decides if we're going to do that or not. At any point in time, we found a new land, we made a recommendation, town council is sure to could have said, no, it's going either. We're not going over there. We have no authority on that. You do.
Yep, you're right. You're, you're right about that. My only thing, I want it on the agenda, I want to keep it going.
Well, you can, you can put anything on your agenda you want, but I'd be more than happy to tell you what we're doing all the time. But what I'm saying is, when an architect gets the plans and he's working on them for 10 months, and now we have the top little food chain, not when he sees those things happening, when he says, what's going on with the state police? Are you really moving to state police? You know, why not? But you're involved.
Want to be involved as a council, not just, not just Denise as a member, but the whole council to get this thing done. I just want it done.
Everybody wants it done.
I know.
Everybody wants it done. Nobody wants off this committee more than the committee members, right? We didn't sign up for six years. That wasn't our goal. Our goal was to sign up, get it to where we, where the mission statement said, and move on. And then we figured out, nobody else is going to do anything. So it's either going to die alive in there, or we were going to carry forward. Where, where does it say in the mission statement about getting grants, getting funding, doing all that? None, nowhere.
I thought we had asked Renee about that years ago, and it was that the committee was formed to see it through to completion. I don't know, I read it. I read the mission statement, but we are where we're at.
I read all the minutes. I didn't see that anywhere. So it could be there. I could have missed it.
Gordy had something to say.
I got a little bit to say, and hopefully I won't get interrupted. There have been at least no less than six times a state police issue came up on somebody who knows nothing about it, who's never there at any meetings. Well, I want to back up. The article in Observer, I believe, was taken off the minutes.
It was.
Off the public website, and that was formulated off of this camera.
Okay.
I don't believe anybody on this council was even called.
Nope.
It was done with that. That was your first attack, and that thing was an attack from the beginning to the end. You name names, and I will stop before I finish with the state police. You mentioned Mike Chippendale. You of all people know, we can sit here and we can make accusations.
Mr. Rogers.
No.
I know.
You can make accusations where you know how things work, and every time a bill is brought in, it's sent to two legislators, like you said, we have two. Every bill that's requested by the town council through a resolution is sent by the clerk to two people in the legislature that represent this state. You know, and you falsely stated that I did nothing. There was one letter sent to one legislator, not the two. So you don't get to have, to hide all the ground on the accusation that the senator did not.
I just don't understand.
Excuse me, I would don't like to be interrupted.
I just asked to give it hard.
So, one was sent. I was aware of that, and I was told he would handle it, and if it moved forward, which he didn't think it was, there would be a second resolution coming from the center. You know how it works, but in that light, you fabricate things that fit your personal feeling attack and how this went through. This thing, the biggest delay on this project was when it went from there to over there. That delayed it a lot. You, the chairman, at the meeting where this was voted on by the taxpayers, said, knowing it was going there, it was already planned going there, and we're already moving forward, six months, we will have a shovel in the ground. You said that at the financial town meeting. You own that statement. Now, to unfairly throw that letter and attack all this stuff, you threw a lot of names out there and a lot of accusations. The state police issue six times. And it's a shame, as a council member, representing that time, 4,600 residents in this town, that kept coming up to me saying, why aren't we going to the state police? Why aren't we not going to the state police? You know, my answer to them was, I don't know. Maybe it's going to cost us a lot more. Well, maybe you ought to find out, seeing how you're spending my tax dollars as my councilman. So I reached out. Two councilmen went. Well, it's not here tonight, but two council members went. I went that night thinking, they're going to come back and say, we're going to do this for $3 million.
Is this on the agenda?
No, it was brought up six times, and I need to clarify this state police.
I'm not saying anything, Mr. Rogers. I'm giving you your time.
So, ahead of time, I gave them our numbers, gave them our calls, made sure they knew everything, and I said, okay, me and another council member will come up, once you figure out what you want to do. I sat with a guy with a single-digit brand state police who went and did his due diligence. And he told me, he says, you know what's unfortunate? I told him, I said, we have a 1.6 million dollar budget for this police department. It's before we build a $5 million police station. This was before that. We have 1.6 million dollar budget. We also pay for cruises through Capitol. We also negotiate contracts. We also pay a solicitor on top of that, 1.6 million, for prosecution. So realistically, we're about 1.7 million. He sat down, he told me, he said, unfortunately, commonly right now, the state police have two police officers that night in a cruiser. We do two shifts, day shift, night shift. Really, I want to tell you this, but we need, we have to by contract put in the cruiser. So what's going to happen is, we can come into town of Foster, provide an equal or greater police presence to what you have at that time was 10 officers, for $1 million a year. Now I'm sitting there, I don't know what to do. I thought it was going to be $3 million. And this whole thing was going to be brought forward at that point, not for me or this council to make a decision, but for the taxpayers to decide which way to go on this mission. And unfortunately, some people got involved, a lot of union phone calls were made, and all of a sudden, we had to make this quiet. I'm going as high as Gina Ramondo. We got to quiet this down. We got to quiet this down. And a phone call was me saying, you will end this now. That's what I was told. You will end this now. The officer I was talking to, that single digit, got completely reassigned. He is now retired. Completely reassigned, and this thing got better. And you know who suffered? The taxpayers in this town to make a decision which way they wanted to go. Not my decision, not their decision, the taxpayers' decision. You want to go with this option or this option? And as a public servant, that was too big of a decision for me to make. It should have been to the taxpayers. But you know what happened? Got shoved under the rug. I know what happened. That fellow council member know what happened, and you and your people in this state know what happened.
I have no idea.
I'm just telling you, you want to throw accusations out. That's what happened. And that had to be told, and that story is two years old.
Calmly, you were presenting, calmly.
I'm good.
Before you, Mr. Palino, want to speak.
I just want to emphasize that you have a lot to respond to things that are not on the agenda. The public can make comments, but just please don't respond.
So I remember a meeting after the financial meeting where the vote was passed, 1:58,
So I remember a meeting after the financial meeting, where the vote was passed, 158, 170, whatever it was. I remember what Joe had said, is that, if I remember correctly, we can check, if we have to check the minutes, but I remember Joe had said to me that there would be a shovel in the ground soon. But I think we delayed it because of the question that came up on the land. I think the council said, no, not to move forward with the drawings until we had a signed deed in our hands, am I correct?
That is correct, it is in your minutes.
Thank you, okay.
So, I just wanted to clarify, I remember us saying to them not to go forward.
Is that permissible?
Yeah, because that was something that.
Joe said, yeah.
Yeah, and it was relevant to them, specifically to the police department.
Ms. Walsh. Cheryl Walsh, keep coming over. The incident that was spoken about with the state police came to my attention. It was being worked on by two council members. No one else supposedly was apprised of it. They were springing on in a meeting, and I made phone calls to the people that work in this town, that live in this town. And I said, this is what's gonna happen tonight, please show up. They did show up. They didn't want the police station to disappear, they did not want to be taken over by the state police. It was made abundantly clear. The reason it got squashed, the Colonel of the state police sent a letter to us stating, that to you, stating that this was not gonna happen, nor was it ever going to happen, and to just get it out of our minds and put it to bed, and that's the truth.
Well, that's what's in your council minutes, if you read the minutes, that's what it is. I don't know any of that else.
If this is all water runs the bridge.
Right, yes, and forward, but let's go on, it's beyond.
So that, thank you.
But there were, yeah, just to clarify, there were delays. There were delays after the financial town meeting because of the land question, there definitely was. It wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with us. Would I have believed after that vote, we could have a shovel in the ground, six months? I'd say faster than six months, we could have had it in the ground. It should have been that day, they should have said, approve the survey, approve the architect, go. But we spent months and months and months and months reviewing contracts for the architect. I don't know why that takes this long to come, but it's got nothing to do with this committee.
Okay, well, thank you for coming, and for the history, and I hope you don't mind, I like it on every agenda, just so we.
No, I mean, I can't be here all the time, but the audience probably can come.
I just want to thank the committee, because I think they have given, you yourself included, they have given up their time for over six years, not ever planning on doing this. They have stuck with it to all this crap that has taken place, and there's been a lot, mudslinging and everything else, and I, for one, appreciate all their efforts, all their time, and I hope they will see it through. And I will also add that when I thought there was not enough people on there, I asked to be put on that committee, and that didn't go anywhere. I'd still like to be put on that committee, because I really want to see this get done too, Heidi, I've always wanted to see this get done. Thanks, Cheryl, and I think the whole, council as a whole, appreciate what the committee has been doing. Mr. Moreau.
Okay, are we back on the subject now?
We're back, I'm going back.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to discuss, the update.
Thank you.
What, where are we standing with the police station right now? I understand that the survey was completed.
Yep, and that the architect has now been given the digital survey.
Gordy is going to meet with the architect to either approve or revise it.
That part I don't know. And I, I don't know that, I will find out, okay? But I would assume that, but I don't want to assume.
And before he does the provision, he should have, he should have that recorded.
Gordy apologizes, he wanted to be here, he couldn't.
But we have had it.
Did you say while leaving that they had recorded it?
So it wasn't, the survey that was presented was not the one with, he separated out land, because I believe the letter said that they needed plans before they could determine where the lot went to be.
The survey has been done, a digital copy has been sent to the architect, the architect is working on putting in on the land. Gordy has told Heidi, he's meeting on Monday with the architect to finalize that, and then we will move forward, at the last meeting, Mr. Belucci said that he spoke to Mr. Renzi, and said that we'll do this administrative subdivision quickly, and then we can go from there.
But the subdivision, administrative subdivision is based on the survey, which should be recorded.
Right, so, as soon as.
I guess he's not here, so.
It's not there yet.
It's not there yet.
I think you're asking about the two separate lots, like the survey.
No, not the two separate lots, the single lot survey that was done.
My understanding is that's the one that's completed, and then they're gonna do it where they separated.
Right, that has to be recorded, the first, the original survey has to be recorded as well.
I think we have to ask the clerk when she's back, she's on vacation, right?
Yes.
So when she's back from vacation, because she would have.
I have a note to ask if that's done.
Okay, thank you, that's what I'm concerned about.
Mrs. Ryan.
No, I was gonna say, since you're on the subject, would you consider moving the new business item about the location of the police station here?
Well, we haven't finished all about the police station yet, so, because we also have the financing of the police station that we want to discuss. And then I will accept a motion to move number five on the new business to this point. Any other questions on the police station update? Anyone from the council? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to the financing of the police station. So Kelly, you had asked for this to be on.
Because I would like to start moving forward for that, because we just paid something like fifty thousand dollars or something to the architect, and we've only budgeted sixty-five for the year, I think it's time, if we're about to start the process, to, to secure the financing. I asked this a while ago, everybody told me to hold, but I think it's time, it takes some time to go out for a bond, the interest rates aren't going lower. So I actually think that we need to start moving on. We already have a financial planner in place, we've already gone out for an RMP for that, we already have the solicitor in place for the bond issue, who specializes in this type of thing, so I say we start moving forward. We can't just make the assumption that they're ready right this second, so.
Right, and I would agree, I think we're at a point now where we can.
Do we need a motion for that, if that's your job, you just do that?
I was told to kind of hold off on it, so I just figured we'd discuss it, I don't know if we need a motion, it was already, the bond issue itself was already approved at the financial town meeting, and so it was just actually finalizing and moving forward, right?
I agree.
Yeah, I don't recall there being a motion telling her to hold off, I think it was just.
It was a discussion, it was a discussion, because we.
Because you can only hold the money for a certain period of time.
Right.
So, as, if I had gotten it originally, we're at that time, because it's almost two years, so now it's, but we should still move forward.
So I, I think now is the time to move forward, what's.
I agree, yeah.
Yep, so, yeah, I think we're in a place where we can now.
I'll give you updates and let you know how we're going with the process, but I'd like to at least reach out to them, so.
Thank you for the process. Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, perfect job.
All right, at this time.
Yep, I'll make a motion to move item number five on the new business, plot twenty, lot nine, South Killenley Road, location of the police station, up to this point in the meeting.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed? Okay, so Mr. Belucci had asked for, Mr. Belucci.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, I always think that's the.
Well, damn. Just go with it. You say, Ellen.
I, I don't know, I always think.
Who's going?
So, he is not here, but he requested this to be on the agenda.
Did he, did he request it like this, or I thought this was going to planning for a change to the municipal?
No, he was, he asked the last time for it to be on, to ask Gordon to look into.
Oh, okay, that, yeah.
Right, I believe, let's see.
Valuation or something.
Yeah, he wanted to know how much it would cost to.
But it also was to rezone.
To clear the land and move the.
Right, and that is, we did that before, to rezone that piece of property. But he was asking Mr. Rogers to look into the cost of situating the police station there, what that would entail, et cetera.
It's not as easy as Steve thinks, I think in his mind, it would, number one, we wouldn't need a public well, we have a public water system, which is, this, we could get the water to it, that would be a simple jump, and we've already have a public water system certified. You wouldn't need a leach field septic system, but to move the plan to here, you, like Mr. Walsh did say, you can formulate them plans pretty close, but it would still probably caution, probably in the area of twenty thousand plus, a A1 survey, locating it on the property. So you'd be almost exactly what happened when we went from here to there, cost-wise, but a little bit less, because they did have it designed in the hill over there. So I'd have to say with the A1 survey, and the reengineering, when they do a topo here to get your elevations, you're probably gonna be around thirty grand. It's, and that's just to get it designed on paper, so we know where to clear, where to start cutting and digging.
Would that put us back with moving the police station to that spot? So we would be beyond.
It would probably put you definitely back, if you were to start today, six months, six to eight months.
Do you have, do you have a question, yes?
When it comes up, I keep thinking that the ball field cost us so much, hundreds of thousands of dollars in excavation, fill.
That's, that's not the issue here.
You don't, so you think that the leveling of the property for a leach field and parking in a building.
This is, this is a pretty good water table on this end. This, I know I used to own a property right across the street, I worked at the DPW. You mentioned radon, they did do a radon test in the police station, and I told them right off the bat, radon sits on ledge. And because the foundation is so close to ledge, radon can't drain, so you would put vents in. Drilling wells around here, we're a hundred feet the ledge, ninety feet across the street, I drilled a well to ledge, there was really no ledge here, it's all gravel bank. So, cutting and filling would just even off, and it could be designed, if you were to do it, if it was made, you would design it with a walkout, almost exactly like they had. You could almost use the original plans that was in the hill over there, just adjusting the cut and fill. But it's not as simply as let's just go cut some land and, and dig a hole in the foundation, you gotta get it engineered, you gotta get it designed. The well is an easy issue, you'd save that, yeah, we have a public well, you may just have to have, the police are already on the well. You wouldn't be changing anything, you'd just be running a line to the new police station, so. The leach field wouldn't be much, it'd probably be cost about the same as the design over there. Just pretty easy, pretty good water table over here, unless you start going down the hill by the, the dog, sorry.
So you don't see a, you don't see a real issue, and I, I know you know what you're doing when it comes to excavation and leach fields. You don't see an issue, a huge issue like the ball field, with the leveling and the parking.
That was a forty-foot cut, that was a forty-foot cut and fill.
That wouldn't be here?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
One second, so, Mr. Belucci had requested for.
One other thing I would just like to add, personally, future expansion? You could run into problems over there, and I mentioned this before, and it should be taken into consideration, and I'm not saying over here, there are challenges. Future consideration for expansion over here is endless, if you have fourteen acres, that you control. Not how much parking spots we're gonna give you, and we're gonna go over here, and this is our property, and that's only your.
But I, I do believe the discussion was that if they're to the left of the building, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Walsh, that there is room for expansion if we needed it.
Not like you have here.
Well, no, fourteen acres versus, so.
And with the wetlands over there, if you realize between St. Paul's Church and the property line, there's a swamp pond there, where Ken Locke's accident was, that swamp, the new, the new guidelines, you have to stay, they've doubled the setbacks on wetlands now.
I'm, I'm not in favor of, of changing things, like, right now, that was just, that piece of property was talked about as an alternative. If there was something that happened with the transfer of land, if it couldn't be done, because we already own it, I certainly don't want to start over and, and delay this even more, I just want to get it done.
I see, I saw, I make a motion, I see able this, to the other committee.
Okay.
Not table, continue.
Continue, okay.
Continue, okay, thank you.
I guess Steve's questions might have been answered anyway, I might not even need them.
Mrs. Ryan, you had your hand up.
Did anybody second that?
You know that by even discussing it.
There was no second.
There was no second, okay.
And if you want to, want to open it up to discussion, go back to Mrs. Ryan. Do we have a second?
Do we have a second for continuing this to the next meeting?
Oh, okay, continuing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chris made the motion to.
Or if, if you continue.
Mr. Stone, what's your motion? To continue to the next meeting or a future meeting?
A future meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed, thank you.
You were gonna let?
Yeah, I know, I was just thinking that too.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Ryan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, even by postponing this till the next meeting or a future meeting, you are going down the same rabbit hole that you have been going down constantly. Now, are we supposed to wait for the architect's roaring? Are, is she supposed to wait for funding?
No.
And if not, then why even discuss it?
So I said a future meeting, Lynn, if something happened with the other property, which we don't foresee happening.
I. Here we go again.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan, Ms. Walsh, did you?
I, I just wanted to say, I don't want to see this process stop over again, we came so far, we worked so hard on it, and I, I just think this is pie in the sky dreaming, and I think we need to proceed, like you just said, with what's going on.
Did you have something to say, Ms. Bates?
No, you're proceeding, so I don't want to worry about it.
I just want to say one thing, I agree with you that we should move forward, and I think the intention is to move forward. The property was considered a Plan B, as Heidi said, and I agree with that, in a failsafe, if needed, but I think we should move forward too. But I think the question was brought up respectfully, just to throw it out there, to see if other folks thought it was a reasonable Plan B, is the way I looked at it, and I think we're just being respectful to Councilman Belucci's wish to discuss it, I see it just as a.
I understand that, I just think that you can't go forward if you're gonna put me in camp.
I don't think we do, I don't think we do, Lynn, I don't think we do, I think we're just being respectful of the request for information.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the item number three on the old business, because I did promise we wouldn't be more than two and a half hours.
You did, yes.
So, consultant to the police, and Kelly had asked for this to be put back on, go ahead, Kelly.
This was regarding Bob Bolger's letter to the council, offering his assistance, and I, as I said to a couple of you, I believe we need it for the preparation of the budget that Chegg discusses for the chief, and he's not comfortable creating a budget that includes a lot of proposals for how you're gonna move forward next year, because he's not gonna be here to see it through. So Bob had put in an offer, I would like to.
You do have that email in your package, you had it in your package last time.
I'd like to consult, use him for the preparation of the budget, and also to help us guide through, guide us through hiring laterals and putting a few people into the academy to start working on that personnel issue to fill the
Void.
The void, really, in personnel that we currently have.
What about?
Those two specific things.
In the interview process?
That's up to you, I'm looking at, at it for me specifically, my current needs to move forward with the budget and the, the hiring of reserving spots or the upcoming academy, et cetera. As far as the interview committee, that's entirely up to you.
I think, I think he'd be good on the interview committee, I understand what you're saying, how much time are we, are we thinking? Do we need to put like a, a limit on how much time it was, like a hundred hours an hour or something?
It, well, he, I, I had discussed that, that is what he had put in there, I had also discussed with you, possibly offering eighty, and I know that that would be acceptable, it's up to you. He needs to, he needs to, he can be, work a detail for fifty, so it's just not, and he can only work so many days a year.
Right.
Based on his retirement, so, that's what.
So.
I need him for a few days anyway.
So, I know that the chief has expressed the concern, because he's, he's leaving, you know, a month and a half, basically. And I, after what Heidi said, my first concern, as referred tonight, is, is there, do you think in your mind that you could set a time limit that we would think it would normally take? Who has done the budgets in the past? The past three years, who has done?
Chief, and actually, Bob has helped, when Bob was here.
Bob and I used to work on it together with Kelly.
And how long does it traditionally take?
Couple days.
Yeah.
How many hours is it, four, six, eight?
Well, multiple visits, multiple times, I don't think we, I would need him for more than, say, three to five days, and that would include probably the, that would probably include the staffing issue as well.
Twenty-five to forty hours, potentially?
I would say.
Kelly, no, Kelly, best.
Yeah, I would say.
So we could set a not to, like a.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, a target, so as to Heidi's point, and everybody in the audience about the police station,
Yes.
if we could just have an idea of what we're agreeing to, it's easier to support it and get behind it, in my view. Because I don't like the whole idea personally, but it is a necessary evil, and the chief's not gonna own it, so why would he, you know?
And we have money for this in the budget, since we have a lack of officers.
We're not going to have a budget going forward if you don't.
Right, no, I am, I am, I'm saying, we do have it.
I think I started from the beginning.
What do you think to me about having this?
I think from the beginning, we've needed Bob to come in, we're in a tough spot, we're down officers, we're losing a chief.
Yeah.
We need a budget done.
Do I make a motion?
What about if they decide specifically what to? Because I, I have spoken to him about the budget and the personnel, if you wanted the interview, then we'd have to reach out for that as well.
I don't know what the interview process, I don't know if that's the same thing.
I don't, I don't know, you, you expressed last time that the council, quick, you and Mr. Belucci were talking about that, that the council should be able to make that decision, I don't know questions to ask.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if Bob, I mean, Bob has a long history here in town, if he'd be good to.
I mean, there's two proponents, we can ask if he would, so, A, in the interview, or B, if not, to provide us questions and guidance on the interview process.
That's a good idea.
We can do, we can do both, and see where he feels comfortable.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we allow Kelly the ability to work with Mr. Bolger and the chief on developing a budget for 2023, 24, or 24.
Twenty-four.
And also to use Mr. Bolger, if he agrees, in the interviewing process for a new chief.
A second.
And what about, I have a cap number of hours.
And personnel.
Personnel, you're right.
Personnel contributing.
Yep, either personnel, because we talked about laterals.
Lateralists, yes.
And the academy.
So I'd like to add that he be involved in the academy hiring process and the, and the transfer process.
I would change the language on that, because it sounds like you're forcing someone to. That is, if he is available and agreeable.
Well, I was just, the beginning of my motion was, if, if Mr. Bolger agrees. If he agrees, so if Mr. Bolger agrees, he can assist in the, and aid in the hiring of a new chief, the interview process, the lateral moves, the new hires of cadets, and also, I would ask that this be limited to a cap of forty hours.
At.
At.
If the interview process, can we add, can we go to forty-eight? Just in case, like, I don't know, go to forty-eight hours, just in case, it was what I was thinking, I was thinking budget and personnel issue. The interview, I don't know, where we stand, just do forty-eight.
That's not, that's not feasible, that's not feasible, two hours per candidate, so.
What do you think?
Oh, I'd like to say fifty, but. Oh, I'd like to say fifty, but she says, I'd like to say we should volunteer, but we have people volunteering here every day. No, okay, so do you think it would be appropriate at eighty? And I hate to make, you know, to delay.
Do we have?
Do we have permission?
He would not take it for us at eighty, I don't know.
What do you think?
Let Kelly, I'd say we let Kelly negotiate that with him.
Not to exceed.
Eighty dollars per hour, kind of rate of eighty dollars per hour, or no?
Or it's a motion.
Negotiate a, what, you just gave some amount, like forty-eight hundred, or?
Oh, like a flat fee.
I like that.
Like a flat fee?
A flat fee, that it would...
Not to exceed forty-eight hundred. Okay, so, so to include a reimbursement of up to forty-eight hundred dollars for his services.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Yeah, whatever that was. That was horrible, thank you. It made me feel nervous.
The motion has been made and seconded. That was made by Heidi, no, Daisy, and then Heidi. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I really thought we needed him in the beginning, so I appreciate that. Moving on, we have the municipal court. Mr. Stone and Mr. Paolino, you're up.
Chris, you're up. So thank you, everybody, thank you for, Chris, for letting me do it. Chris and I worked on the municipal court. It's been a long time, it's been, for some of us, it's been a real personal endeavor, starting with the zoning board and the failures and the shortcomings of working with Superior Court. But I'm happy to say that I'm gonna be looking to get a motion to move forward with the process, and the process is gonna be, well, first of all, it's been delayed because I wanted to use the Boroughville model. And the Boroughville model didn't work out, and I had to go to North Smithfield with Chris and get the North Smithfield model to present to Senator and Rep. to bring to the State House upcoming, I hope in June. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have a forced municipal court, and we're gonna change it up a little bit, and we took the recommendation of Ron Servacio's recommendation of including the traffic tribunal, which is a huge undertaking compared to just a municipal court for zoning ordinances and violations. So it took a little extra work to modify it, and what we have is a really good package. We're gonna look to go get funding to use a company called Curious Systems. So the municipal court will reside here. We have a judge, the judge's fee will be a set yearly fee, a stipend. We're looking at approximately, roughly, and I'll present this again when we finalize it, at about six thousand dollars per year. The budget we're gonna model is gonna be approximately twenty-three thousand dollars a year. That's gonna include the judge, miscellaneous purchases of material, probably a laptop for the administrative assistant. It's gonna be to pay the administrative assistant overtime, to pay a police officer overtime to be here, once a month. We're looking at once a month. Now, the state and Curious Systems, who's gonna manage this, will allow us to manipulate that schedule based on our needs, if we have a short month or a hefty fine month, let's say. Because once cleaning up Route Six is done, we're not gonna be really busy, I hope, with the zoning violations anymore. But anyway, the municipal court is gonna be handling, the municipal court judicial cases by Curious Systems. They currently, currently service twenty-seven municipal courts in Rhode Island, so they're experts. And they're gonna help us with everything. Data entry, the software, the database, information transfer between the DMV and the traffic tribunal. So it's a really, it's one-stop shopping. We don't have to buy a lot, we don't have to lay out a lot of cash, hardware and software. It's a one-time fee of seven thousand dollars per year for the software. They will, at a fee, train us. But I have two municipal court clerks currently, Boroughville and North Smithfield, are just phenomenal. They've offered to help already at no cost. They're gonna help us to build a strong foundation with a clerk. And I think, and chief would know better, but I think it's gonna be a wise decision, because the model throughout the twenty-seven communities is the police chief's AA is the one that handles all of the municipal court dealings.
What's AA?
Administrative assistance. Because, I apologize, because they're well-versed in all of the information, data, the other clerks or administrative assistants throughout the state. So there's just a strong community and a foundation and network that they've built. And so far, it's working really well for the other twenty-seven municipal courts. Curious Systems, like I said, they do all the database work, they do, their process is Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal compliant, they're DMV compliant, they handle the financials, they do pretty much everything, ticketing, the notices, the serving, the background checks, all the stuff that they need to do to prepare for a court case, from cradle to grave. They see it through from the beginning to end. So it's really, 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 really an impressive thing that they've got going on, that we want to model. I've had it uploaded in SugarSync. Chris and I had uploaded a state of Rhode Island model from North Smithfield as a resolution, and some other, there's another document here that was uploaded for relating town general responsibilities and powers. So if you're interested, you can get that information, if you want an in-depth look at how it works, don't want to take up your time to go through every page, if that's okay. So you're welcome to look at that, it's all gonna be made public on SugarSync, or I'm sure the clerk can send you an email. I'm not allowed to recognize, so I'm just presenting?
Yeah.
So I'll let Denise do that, thank you. So I'm gonna ask that we, Chris and I wanted to ask that we push this forward and get it funded and go forward, and don't delay, and start the ball rolling with Torji, Inman and Torji's help. Julia and Mark are gonna help, we have a judge, so we have that all lined up and ready to go, that wasn't gonna change based on who we use and who we model. Rep. Chippendale and Senator Rogers are gonna have to do their thing. I don't think it's a problem, Gordon. It's not a problem usually getting it, getting improved, but we have to go through the formal process, okay?
You could actually start that process now, and enabling legislation, could be applied now.
I'm gonna, but Mark has a copy of this, I believe, we sent him an email, so Mark has it. So they're gonna take a look at it, they have to look at the jargon and make sure it's legit and what we want to do. They have to make sure that they dot all the i's and cross the t's. But there's more to come, but we're excited about it. The town, I think, you know, Ron Servacio had talked to me about it, and he beat me over the head as usual, or the usual expelatives.
Expertise.
What kind of, you know, deal are you running here? So we did modify it, it took a little more time, but we're excited that it'll work, and it'll benefit what Mr. Walsh had said, and what we all know in the room. Lot of speeding, lot of accidents, just a lot of stuff going on. I wasn't happy about it in the beginning, having a traffic tribunal, I'll be honest with you. But after talking to everyone, the experts say it's the only way to go. It is most definitely so the way to go. I'll give you an example, don't hold me to it. The budget we carry should be around twenty-three thousand to fund this. The average annual take is eighty-three to a hundred thousand. They have, we have to pay state fees. We don't have any way of knowing what that would be, because I don't have a breakdown of what they paid for each violation. But it's encouraging to know that it can fund itself, it's certainly not a moneymaker, it's not an intention to hurt anyone in town. We know that a lot of folks, like, you know, certain folks like to, you know, drive a little fast, like run. But in all seriousness, the thing is though, is it's not gonna be a moneymaker for the town, we don't want to hurt residents. But we do want to keep the roads safe, we want to keep the kids safe, we want, and we need... I have a personal belief that in order to solve some of the problems that we've all complained about and we've all gotten beaten up about. We've all been beaten up about Route Six and the trash and the zoning and fighting in Superior Court. Julia will tell you, especially with COVID, it's a year to two years for a case. After getting involved with Joe Walsh and the zoning board, we can honestly say that when a case goes to Superior Court, it could take a year. And you all are chomping at the bit and wanting to kill us with pitchforks and torches, because nothing seems to be getting done, but I'm telling you, it's frustrating. But you cannot circumvent the system. We are, our hands are tied, we absolutely have to follow the rules of engagement, and it stinks. It's not, it's not fun. This could help us, I think Julia would agree, this could help us in that area to speed things along.
Does it also, it also saves, sorry, you lose money, right? With this, if you're not spending as many hours in court, like pursuing one case for a year.
Well, appeals are still a thing, if someone decides to appeal, but...
To Superior.
It's a lot more likely they will ignore something from municipal court, or from Superior Court, and let me go through it.
Good point.
I'm sorry, the gentleman back, if you could just state your name and address.
Yep, Phillip Key, 18 Bottoms Hill Road. You answered my first time, my question was, revenue that we generate? You said between eighty-three and a hundred.
Well, that was an example I was given, and it's really hard to say that that would be anything. I'm just giving you an idea, because I wanted that percentage, I want, I was interested in the ratio of four to one. What we spend versus what the state, what the town could take in. And we don't want to call it revenue, it's just collected fees, because some, like Julia would tell you, and I'm not an expert, some funds have to be paid to the state for these violations, so we may be sharing, but it's a considerably smaller percentage than what we do when we give it up to the traffic tribunal.
My second question is, is any of that money then going to be allocated for policing? To go into the police budget?
I think...
Because it is, it is.
I think that's a great question, and I think that's one that we're gonna have to, we're gonna, I will get you, I will get the council an answer. Chris and I will go back to the existing tribunals to see how they handle it.
I think it would be our decision, whether it's where...
Well, to be honest with you, regardless of how you record it, if you're fully funding the police department and all of their activities, all of that money goes to offset that and offset your taxes. That's how it works. I mean, as long as you fund all of their initiatives, you are in essence inadvertently using that money to fund them.
So, so to answer your question, I can't, I don't know how the money will be funneled and channeled throughout the town, but I would assure you that it's gonna go to repay costs.
It's like there are fines and penalties right now, even though it comes from the state, it's general fund money, and the general fund is what funds the police department. So in essence, it's very similar.
I was just, I wasn't sure, because you were talking about a police budget. So I didn't know if that was separate and apart from the general.
The police budget is a part of the general fund. It's made up of several departments, and in culmination, it makes up the general fund.
They already have an allocation for speeding tickets, right?
Well, we recognize that as revenue, and now it's just a different form of revenue, and that offsets your tax base, but it also, so it's not directly associated to the police department, but it offsets, we're fully funding the police department directly.
So it's the same, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rider.
I was gonna say, the twenty-three thousand dollars seems very, very reasonable. Do they give an estimate of how much it might increase each year? Because I'm sure they're not gonna leave it static.
No, that's a good point.
I think that's a setup fee, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, no, the, well, okay, so no, that's, it's twenty, their budget is twenty-three thousand, and we would have to discuss that again, because those are projected costs that I don't know. But Kelly would probably be able to tell us better how much we should carry for budget increases based on the judge's requirements, the future pay of administrative assistant and the police officer's salary.
So then twenty-three thousand, I'm sorry to interrupt, the twenty-three thousand is salaries for the judge, for the clerk?
Absolutely, everything, even money put aside for paper, ink, computer software program, because the software is seven thousand dollars a year.
And that's part of that.
It's part of that, absolutely. It's a total funding of the municipal court, it's twenty-three thousand dollars per year. And the judge, I think, and I have to, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that the judge's estimate to me a year ago, ten months ago, was about six, we're gonna carry about six thousand dollars a year for the judge. Blanket fee, once per month. That's what they get, and it's pretty, it's pretty average. As a matter of fact, you guys know the judge in, I think the judge in North Smith, in Boroughville is Goram. Mr. Attorney Goram?
Nick.
Nick Goram? I think he's the judge. I think he's the municipal court judge in Boroughville.
I don't know.
I think Mark had told me that, possibly. But anyway, it is really encouraging, the numbers are fair, they're reasonable, it's something we can do, and it gives us light at the end of the tunnel.
So what are you looking for with the county?
I think we need, Chris and I were talking about just the move to, but we're not able to until you guys draft it.
You'll need a motion or anything, so just for the council's understanding, our office will draft three things, the resolution, the proposed Enabling Act, that's gonna be sent to the legislator, and then the proposed ordinance, which would include the policies, the procedures, the staffing, all of that stuff, which is kind of like a restatement of the Enabling Act with additional detail.
Thank you.
And then after that, motion.
And I appreciate, when you look at the information that Chris and I have gathered, when you look at that, if you could tell me what additional information you need, I'll get right on it.
Absolutely.
And I promise I won't be late. I apologize to everybody that I was late.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good nap, please. Had an emergency framing him, thought I could make it.
We had scheduled a budget workshop for next Tuesday, and Heidi and I cannot make it, Mr. Bolucci has just come back from his vacation. So we would like to reschedule that. We do have one scheduled...
For the seventh.
For, is it the seventh?
Yeah, that's what I have, the seventh, sixteen.
Yeah, I have the seventh, I'm looking.
And I say we just move the second to the seventh, because I'm telling you, you're not gonna have enough information to make it work. You're warring earlier than that.
So we have, let's schedule for March seventh?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I do have it.
The seventh and the sixteenth.
So if we could move the second to the seventh, I think it would probably be more...
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Because don't forget, I'm not gonna have the police budget ready for the twenty-eighth. I'm gonna put in, I'm gonna create a packet for what we can have available at that time, but we just don't have enough available. We're not ready, anyway.
Okay, so in, we're not technically rescheduling the second, because we're just canceling it.
We're almost canceling it and starting it with the seventh.
Okay, does that work?
Okay, so we're doing the seventh?
We're doing the seventh.
And we have one on the sixteenth, so most likely, we'll have to add another reading.
And what time is it?
If someone's through this, yeah, yeah.
Four o'clock, so on March seventh, at four o'clock, here, budget workshop.
Yes.
When's the next one?
And then the sixteenth, at four o'clock.
The sixteenth, and maybe we'll try to squeeze one in between, if we feel like we're gonna...
Seems like we just did this.
We did.
It feels, it does feel like we did it. So then, now that we're talking about it, just, I know on the same schedule that your budget packets were gonna be available from the twenty-eighth, that's most likely not gonna happen. I will start on SugarSync putting in what we do have and start packets for you, but the whole package won't be available, I will have the police done the five weeks of the week after, and most of the department heads haven't, I haven't really met with, and we're definitely not finalizing for it. So I'll have capital in there for you, for sure, and a few of that.
Planning's already...
It's not, I've done what I can, and then we'll have to go from there. So I'll have to get my grant and George.
Could you just list what the dates are?
Seven and the sixteenth, for sure.
Sixteen so far.
At four o'clock. No time change.
And you did that so that department heads didn't have to stay... Okay, moving on.
Look at this, we're onto this, Mr. Stone.
We have, Mr. Bolucci and I have spoken previously about the public comments, et cetera. I would ask to move that to the next meeting when Ms. Denise is here, so he can be part of the discussion.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move this item, open meeting procedure, public participation, to the next agenda.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and then we did, nope, number two. He's sitting so nicely, eh? No, I'm sorry about that.
No, I don't say.
I know, I said.
We should, I should...
We don't usually practice this way.
We, yeah, we're sorry, we...
And she's usually much meaner.
So the next item is the appointment of our planner. We had discussed it in executive session at the last meeting, and we said that we would appoint him upon his BCI check and references.
He passed.
He passed.
Oh, that's a first.
And even the nationals' BCI check, so he's a good guy. And even the nationals' BCI check, so he's a good one. So we're, um, what is the pleasure of the council? And I would like to keep in mind a six-month probation period.
I think that's, I think that's automatic.
Yes, it is, but I just wanna make sure.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Grant McGregor.
That's right.
As town planner.
Second.
Discussion.
What do you think?
Yeah, we're all set, we're good to go.
Hearing, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thanks, I appreciate the opportunity.
We're looking forward to having you, thank you so much.
I'm looking forward to it.
Now, the last time you had said you'd be able to begin on Monday, I didn't know if that got pushed out further.
No, Monday will be a good start date for him.
Yeah, he confirmed the, you know, the set.
Yeah, I already took a look at it, but it looks like there's a lot of projects to get done.
Yes, there are, there are, and I have a couple more that I'll be calling.
He came in on five o'clock, we showed him around.
Oh, good.
Karen introduced him to everybody.
Good.
Great, great, thank you so much, Grant, I appreciate it. If you wanna leave, you can leave, I'm sorry. I, we should have moved you.
Yeah, I was, I was.
There are times of little bit interesting.
Oh, okay. All right. So, um, we have also, number four is a memorandum of understanding between the state police and the town of Foster. If you recall, we discussed, um, the police station and that we're low on staff. And we, for safety concerns, we asked the chief to, um, cancel or did, I'm not quite sure the correct term, the third shift, the late night shift, because we just, there was a lot of overtime, we were concerned about coverage and having two officers on at a time. So the chief did reach out to, um.
Colonel Weaver.
Colonel Weaver. And we have in our packet what their memorandum of understanding is. It is temporary. Um, they will, they gave us two, if you will, quotes or two.
Well, I believe because they're gonna have two officers on, so one is for the standard and the other one would be, would be consistently filled with overtime.
Well, one is for, one is for fiscal year ending June. Yeah, they're, they're two standards.
Depends on what they're ranked.
Right.
Yeah, with the rank.
The highest rank will be a sergeant from, uh, basic trooper up, up to a sergeant.
So it just causes more if it's the sergeant that's on overtime and then it's a regular trooper.
Right, and they determine, they will determine who they have, according to this, they have there.
Yes.
But they gave us for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, which is until June thirtieth. And then they gave us a fiscal year for twenty-twenty-four. But the rates may increase because they have negotiations effective beginning in October. So it is temporary, it is at, they will, they determine who they send. Um, it might not be the same to, to versus.
It's gonna be a big, an overtime basis, in other words, they'll sign for, whoever signs for will be assigned on a rotating basis. So it will not be the same.
It will not be the same.
There'll be one paid at regular rate and on at overtime.
Yeah, one on duty and then one, uh, then one on overtime, correct.
Right.
And we can, this, I, I read through it and we can, um, sever this anytime if we, if we get up to staff so we're not bound.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's just thirty days notice.
Thirty days notice.
Right, so we're not bound.
But there was a seven days something in here too, I forgot that.
Um, yeah, what was that?
Or they wanna meet with a, or, or within seven days of a request, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it's every six months or within seven days.
Six months or within seven days. And we can, and it within.
Do you, the only thing that I would need if this is where you're gonna go, who you want your operational point of contact to be?
That was no question too.
Um, because I don't, I have to fill that in before I can have it signed. Um, and then Denise will ultimately sign, can I just say that?
Wouldn't it be David while he's here and then?
While I'm here, yeah.
But can you, can Tyler receive this?
And he's only here for six weeks. I, I don't know.
But Tyler's still out, and I guess, uh.
Well, you, you for the interim, right?
Would.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here until April seventh, I guess, and then maybe if, if you do, A, select another chief by then, he could slide into that or, and if not, then we can, uh, discuss if you wanna implement Tyler.
Well, Ty, Tyler should be back, right?
I, I don't know.
He'll be back.
Tyler will be.
Oh, he is, okay.
For right now, he has to.
Like, if you put David in there, then we go for that. Put David in and then we choose.
You think it should be the chief anyway? Regardless? It should always be the chief if there is a chief.
If there is a chief, it should be the chief.
Can you, can you do what you're appointed?
I said, I don't make the decision.
Right, right.
So that's.
All right, so for now, we need.
You're putting that, uh, didn't mean to interrupt, uh, present, chief or his designate, which means in lieu of the chief, then I guess.
That's, yeah.
And I can put in the main line.
Okay.
I can do that.
I agree with that.
So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to enter into the memorandum of understanding between the Rhode Island State Police and the town of Foster for the overnight shift on a temporary basis.
Second, oh, sorry, Chris.
That's eleven P M. to seven A M.
Correct, and I spoke with Colonel Weaver and, uh, he advised me to contact him Monday morning. And, uh, as far as when we're gonna implement this.
Great. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say this, that I want rumor to get out that, because there's a lot of nasty rumors, that this is temporary. The state police made it clear to me and everyone else who asked that this is temporary and they are not happy about having to do it because they don't have enough people. I fi, I have friends on the state police who are getting called, forced back off of vacation to cover shifts. They are in just as much trouble as we are here and nobody knows that better than the chief.
And we have offices working a hundred hours.
No, it's not safe.
It's not safe.
So I've heard rumors, I've had rumors, uh, that, one, we're taking away the overtime and then two, that we're, people are alone. The same people are saying, we're, we're taking overtime away, are saying that it's a shame that, that, that the offices are alone. So I don't know how you have it over.
We're gonna be able to implement a second car, seven to three through to eleven voluntarily.
Yeah.
So they'll still get their overtime.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, there's no way there's gonna be no overtime for this foreseeable future. But the rumors are out that it's, that, that the, the council is doing something horrendous and it's just not true. There's no one here that's trying to do anything, uh, underhanded or, or destructive to the police department.
It's not, it's a matter of public safety.
It is a matter of public safety.
And just three to eleven or just three to eleven?
No, the, the state police are eleven to seven.
I'm commenting on what David just said.
Because that, we, we agreed if we were.
Seven to three and three to eleven? Don't we have the second person at seven to three?
No, we have one car on the road. This was gonna enable us to run two cut, have a backup officer voluntarily.
But you, I think we've always had one car on the road because we've had like a captain and, or somebody else in.
It was gonna be, we.
So when Tyler comes back.
It was gonna be voluntary overtime so we could run a second car, seven to three and three to eleven so they can still get overtime voluntarily and not work it alone.
Didn't you, I thought that, I, I recall that too, Kelly, I thought that the seven to three.
You've always only had one officer on during seven to three because you have people in.
So that because.
We're gonna be able to post voluntary overtime now if they wanna have a second car.
But it's.
But if they have the overtime, I, I understand, but I do need clarification.
That's an old, what's that?
Yeah, you just need clarification.
I need clarification.
Thank you, I'm concerned about your budget. So I understand the second shift.
Right, I understand the three to eleven.
I'm sure because you and Tyler are both not in, in town. But once Tyler comes back, I was thinking, well, I'm just concerned about the budget. I was thinking that Tyler would be the second person when he's there versus.
I thought that was way.
I thought it was always like that, but I, I could be wrong, but.
I thought it's always that the captain and the chief are there, so we don't have somebody from.
For the, and we have another.
Right, not on weekends.
And, right, that's right.
Right, right, weekends are different, I mean, that's a whole different.
That's what I, the clarifying would be weekends and then three to eleven.
Okay, okay. Just.
And it's gonna keep the remaining officers that we have happy because we don't need anybody else walking because then we'll be more predicament.
Yeah, right. I'm just.
And that's the reality, to be honest with you.
I'm just mentally trying to calculate the balance, that's all.
I understand. So, okay.
Thank you.
So, um, all in favor of the memorandum of understanding?
Let's have our hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you could just give the nuts and bolts. These two state cops will be here physically every night, eleven to seven?
They're posted here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where they're gonna be posted. They, and then, and then they're not gonna also respond to any plodding life calls. They're gonna handle crimes, accidents, and obviously an alarm bell. That's, that's it.
Right. Yeah.
They're not gonna handle vacuum doors, nothing like that, that's in the M O U.
They're not gonna be hanging out in the police station.
They're not gonna be in the state station. Or are they gonna be, that's up to them.
One person speaking at a time, please. Could I just say, so they're not going to be in the police station?
No, they're not.
No, no, no. But they will be on the list. They will be, but I mean, will they be in Lincoln?
No.
No, I'm, I'm looking for where it says.
Oh.
Okay.
And the.
Actually, I thought Julie had something on the.
Yeah, once this is fully executed, this is a public document. So once it's fully executed by the criminal and by the police, uh, Ms. Still can get your private.
No, I'm, I'm just, I don't believe that, I believe it said that they're not responding from out of town. They'll be in there.
They're being.
It says, it does say, um, that they will be in town, but they may be called out of town if there's an emergency statewide where they need them, they will be pulled out.
We, we do that.
We do that for a time.
Right, right.
I, I just remember a couple of years ago, and I can't remember why it was being discussed, but we're, in certain circumstances, I guess, the E M Ts cannot go into a building unless there are police there.
In a domestic. Or a psych eval is pretty much the only time we can.
So, I mean, I just.
We're, we're trying the best we can.
No, 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 I just, I didn't know where they were gonna be, I thought.
They are gonna be in town unless there's an emergency statewide that they need them to co-opt at town. Okay. So. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have next the cost of the engineering for A D A, um, employee entrance ramp. And you have that within your packet. So the total cost, if I'm reading it correctly, would be seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Just for the engineering.
Just for the engineering. Just for the engineering.
Just for a drawing.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Well, if engineering is gonna cost that much, I'm thinking it's probably triple for the project to get done. I, I don't know, I'm just, I don't know, that's a lot of money.
Denise, I would advise, uh, it's my understanding that, um, the federal A D A office is, you know, was invited to inspect Town Hall. Um, I think any action that you take should be in light of any, uh, determinations or report that they provide
That's.
in, in align with their guidance because it doesn't make sense to shell out money if, you know, there's guidance otherwise.
Makes sense?
That does. Yeah, so you have it in your packet, you have the information, so we can wait until that is done.
Same motion?
No, moving on. Moving on. We have, um, Mrs. Dillon, oh, is it the four H, I have so many things, okay.
Yeah. There was a question. Are you thinking in the app pack or is that?
Yes, you should have an email from Lori Cardillo.
All right, I didn't see that.
Um, so Lori Cardillo, um, I am on the Foster Old Home Days Committee and we had a meeting the other night and Lori Cardillo was there and she approached me stating that they, and it's in her email here, um, I'm writing to you to, to, regarding the animal buildings on the fairgrounds. She's the four H coordinator for North Rhode Island, which means she oversees the animal portion of Foster Old Home Days. Um, I would like to address the fact that the animal bonds are not listed as being owned by four H. This causes a problem when they're trying to apply for grant money for the four H, from the four H Foundation. Four H has always done all repairs on animal bonds and some repairs and upgrades have been provided by others volunteering their time and funds. I'm requesting the council to designate that the four H owns the animal bonds. So I did speak to Mr. Rogers in regards to that. I do know that, um, the four H community does maintain those, they have for years, have maintained those bonds. I spoke to Gordon about it. I checked with, um, Kate, the bonds are on town property. Um, they are not taxed and they would not be taxed if they went to four H because four H is a, yeah, if they're a nonprofit.
Five oh one C three.
They're insured by us.
The buildings are insured by you? Oh, actually, I didn't think of that question.
Yes, they are.
I have a question, Julia. If, if this is adopted, what would stop them from refusing the use of the bond to any other organization that we wanna, we wanna have an outing?
That is a great question.
Because I would like, ADG wants to come, the American Heritage Association would love to do a show here. We had one scheduled and then COVID came and we had to cancel. I stopped the process of, of using the fairgrounds. I don't, I mean, I love the four, we, we serve the four H community too with our animals and we're connected, but I just don't wanna, um, I don't wanna back ourselves into a corner where no one else can use the facility.
The building is insured by the town, it's also part of our listed fixed assets in the audit report and.
Well, that means a lot.
Just for your.
I'm glad, thank you, I was trying to say hold on.
Denise, if you'd like, our office can reach out to her and discuss if, uh, like a lease. Would be, and if there's a written lease agreement, for like a dollar a year or something.
And that would forego the limits to anybody else?
That will, you can still own it and we could build something in that you have the ability to let other people use it.
Yeah.
Um, but if that alleviates her issues, you know, that's something we, our office can vet, discuss with her and then vet that as an option.
I would only wanna present to the council that with all the growth we've got dreaming about with this new land purchase and the center of town, um, any hopes of progress, the fairgrounds might be utilized more and more than it ever has in the past with hope. I hope that it does do that. Now, I think once we do this, we've actually shot ourselves in the foot. Make it potentially if we don't pay attention to the layout.
Yeah, if the, if the council or the office can, can vet that as an option, see what.
And also I'd like to look at the financial aspect because, um, there's a Gatsby out there that's relatively new that's specific to leasing and even leases for a dollar, we might have all this additional reporting in our audit report. So I just would like to see what that would be too with the auditor, so you know, we're still in process.
And also, Julia, when you do look into it, and this is, I, I apologize, I'm not trying to waste time, but if we did, if we were to follow through with this the way they presented it and anything were to happen to that group, what happens to the town? And, and if there's any monies owed, if somebody gets, well, if somebody gets hurt or there's a fire and somebody gets burned, I mean, is the town owning?
Four H has their own insurance.
Right.
Are we sure that that's gonna, we're not gonna be liable, do, or will it be liable?
But we. I can't definitively say that because what you're asking is to give them ownership of the buildings, not ownership of the land. And so, eh, there's, you know, uh, it's a joint, it's a liability there, um, and that's something that you.
It's money waters. Yeah, I think so, I think there's a dual liability that we should be concerned about.
There definitely is because you would be the owner.
Now, if we owned it, if someone got hurt, we're responsible, but we also have all the control.
Kelly, did you just say that we pay the insurance on the building?
We pay the insurance, it's recorded in our, um, capital assets, it's recorded in our fix, uh, financial report.
Yeah, I'm surprised with the value of this thing.
And in all honesty, there's this whole new lease Gatsby that's a heavy lift and, um, it might require additional disclosures and a footnote all, all to, to lease property.
What is it?
I, I don't. I mean, if.
So, um.
So that's it.
Would you like a motion for that? Would you like a motion for us to say that or?
You don't, you don't need a motion.
Okay, and I will get in touch with Lori and let her know that you will be contacting her. Because I really, I really would like to see, I mean, I'd hate to see that they can't get grant money because they don't own the building, just like we can't get accreditation because our building isn't up to snuff.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could we, um, request that they get a supplemental insurance policy on those buildings? If we, if we lease the land to them and that would cover the liability, some of the liability, if that's, if that's possible.
There, there's also the option to put indemnification language in a, in a lease. That's also something that can be, um, discussed, but we need to make sure that a lease is even viable before we can get that far into the research.
And I don't want, and to answer the gentleman's question, I don't wanna dismiss the fact that we can't operate the bonds. If they say no, it's no, so if we wanna have the Girl Scouts come in, we have to wonder if they're gonna allow it, right? On, on, in their, in their bond.
It's just a matter of getting your ducks in a row and all your.
I agree, we just, we need to ask the questions to see what their answers are.
Okay, thank you. So now, next on your agenda, you have the, um, resolution. Uh, Mrs. Dillon had reached out to me asking for this to be put on the agenda in regards to, um, the primary elections and the dates, and, um, she's hoping that we will approve this.
I'm assuming that she's doing this because if they have the Labor Day, the Monday off, then they won't have time to set up polling places.
So, yeah.
Okay, um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two. Resolution of the town, uh, I'm sorry, of Foster Town Council to the Honorable General Assembly in urging support of twenty twenty-three H five three oh nine, be it resolved by the Town Council of Foster as follows. Whereas H five three oh nine was introduced into the General Assembly on February first, twenty twenty-three by Representatives Place, Rayah and Nardon. And whereas this act provides that if a primary election is scheduled for the day after Labor Day, then the primary election shall be held on the Wednesday. then the primary election shall be held on the Wednesday after Labor Day instead of the Tuesday after Labor Day. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town Foster, Rhode Island, as follows. Section one, that the Town Council of the Town Foster officially expresses its support of H five three zero nine and respectfully requests the Honorable General Assembly to enact H five three zero nine. Section two, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage by the Foster Town Council, approved by the, of the Foster Town Council this twenty-third day of February, twenty twenty-three.
What's the pleasure of the council?
What would the resolution, what would the motion, to adopt the resolution, take a motion, we adopt the resolution as written? Second.
Um, discussion and then vote before you sign.
Oh, I'm not signing yet. I'm only making my notes. I, she, we're here tonight. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I will sign. Thank you. Next, we have the Economic Development Consultant. Um, it was decided that the presentation would be on Wednesday night, March um twenty-second. It will be held at the Payne School.
What time is it?
Um, seven o'clock. It will also be on Zoom. I had, I, was it in the Sugar Sync the ad?
Yeah.
Okay, so in your, in Sugar Sync, you will see the ad where it has a little blurb. Um, I did reach out to the Foster Home Journal, she's placing it in there. Um, I would like permission to get it to go into the Observer. I know that's gonna be a fee and I don't know what that fee is. Do you guys know what the top?
Probably about a hundred and eighty dollars, two hundred dollars.
To put in a.
Well, depends, oh, no, I take it back. Yeah, I don't know.
It's not a big thing, it's just a little.
Oh, it's at least that though. It's most likely at least that.
So, um, I would like to be able to place that in the um Observer so that we get more people participation. What we've been discussing on the um, the meetings with the um Economic Development Committee is that we need the residents and the citizens of town to be vested and own this to move forward, to have it be successful. So I'd like to get as much participation as possible.
So you're looking for a motion to advertise this in the Observer?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion uh to advertise the Economic Development Consultant presentation uh in the Observer up to, should I put a price on it?
When you either advertise or you don't.
Okay, all right, so I'm not putting a price on it then.
Second.
Discussion. Just to let Grant know that we've been, we hired a, an economic development consultant. Um, we have bi-weekly meetings on Zoom. Michaela has joined our committee, so you'll be able to join that too and we catch you up. Um, once you have your email, I will send you, or Michaela can get you a copy of the presentation at this time, so you can be part of the conversation.
Excellent, I'll do the homework on what's been discussed recently.
Okay, great, great. And if you have any questions or concerns, Michaela's there, I've been on it. Um, Mr. Renzi is um the chair of the planning board, he's been participating, okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, because we're having a meeting on the twenty-second, that might be lengthy. We have a town council meeting on the twenty-third. I'm putting it out there that you might want to, do you want to cancel that one or?
Did we, and we've got some, we've got some budget workshops in there too, so, um, Kelly, you just did this, is that a date you?
Hold on, because we have a possible scheduled public hearing for the twenty-third or the thirtieth. So you can cancel the twenty-third, but then you, which is, it's, it's not a bad idea.
Well, they're pushing everything off of it.
But then you have to have a meeting on the thirtieth. Because that's your last possible date for a public hearing according to our charter and state law.
Would you like me to make a motion, we sleep over between the twenty-second and the thirtieth, we never.
So I, I don't disagree that, I mean, cause we might not be ready for that.
When you said that, Dave.
For example, you might not be ready for that public hearing anyway, and then you would have already had a town council meeting scheduled and you'd still have to meet on the thirtieth. So it's not a bad idea to move it to the thirtieth? But you can't cancel it all together and then go to April, because you have to have a public hearing on the twenty-third or the thirtieth.
Okay, so let me throw something else out there. We canceled the March second one.
Yes.
And rescheduled for the seventh. With the possibility of having one on the sixteenth.
No, not the possibility, that's a definite.
Definitely on the sixteenth.
Um, definitely on the sixteenth. Might we need one on the twenty-third?
You may need the twenty-third for a budget workshop in order to be ready for the public hearing on the thirtieth.
Workshop. So, why don't we cancel the council meeting on the twenty-third with the possibility of having a budget workshop on the twenty-third and then have a council meeting on the thirtieth?
I think that's a good idea.
You can do that.
I think we have to do it.
Well, you have to have the twenty-third or the thirtieth for the public hearing.
If history, if history is any indicator, we were very last time.
And I think that you'll, at least it leaves the twenty-third open for a budget workshop.
I think, right, okay, so.
So we're gonna do the town council meeting on the thirtieth?
Yes.
Um, I may have some things for you in executive session, on the twenty-third.
Well, we may be having a public, we might be having a budget workshop anyway.
Are you?
No, they're not, they're not, they're not, they're not.
At that time, so.
They, they can go, maybe thirty, a week.
Yeah, I, I'm waiting for thirty.
Or couldn't we have it prior to the budget workshop?
I mean, the hearing is the twenty-first, so it's not that much.
So we can do the thirtieth, so I would accept a motion to cancel the town council meeting on the twenty-third and have all of it on the thirtieth.
Okay.
Still moved.
Oh, there you go.
So that actually frees us up to start advertising, so Sue will know now
Right.
that we're definitely having a public hearing on the thirtieth to start advertising.
It frees us up to meet six times in March instead of two.
Yes, it's just a busy month for this.
Who said it?
I, Chris, Chris said so.
Through the discussion.
Your fault.
I'll come to workshop.
No, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I second.
I'm to.
Todd, you're crazy.
Go into executive close session pursuant to Rhode Island general laws, oh my God.
Forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, two.
According to this, forty-six, five, eight, two, Congress and House.
Uh, we have the ability here, this motion
and to discuss the litigation.